Hafadeh, welcome everyone to the Guam Congress Building. Thank you for waiting. This is the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. We're called to order. I'm Teresa Terlahi, the Chairperson of the Committee. That's Senator Roy Canata. And Senator Chris Barnett was also here. Today's Tuesday, February 27, 2024. The time is 4:30 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notices were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Tuesday, February 20th and February 23rd, 2024. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. The general rules of conduct are pretty much wait till you're recognized by the Chair before speaking. When you are recognized, please state your name for record-keeping purposes. We're transcribing the hearing so we're just to make sure that we're clear who's speaking at what time. And in the interest of time, I'd ask you to keep your testimony to five minutes, but I'm not mandating that. I'm just suggesting it. All right. This hearing is to collect testimony. And I recognize you've all been waiting already for half an hour, so I'm going to proceed straight to it. Resolution, there's only one item. It's Resolution Number 171-37 LS. This is introduced by Teresa M. Terlahi, Sabina Flores Perez, Chris Barnett, Joanne Brown, Frank Blas Jr., Jessie A. Luhon, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Amanda Shelton, Duane Sinicalis, Joe S. Augustine, relative to expressing the support of Jimena Trentai Shetin Alehesa Tungwahon for amendment of the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act to include the people of Guam's downwinders of U.S. Pacific nuclear testing sites. Extend the claims period and improve compensation and benefits through passage of Senate Bill 1751, H.R. House Bill 4426, introduced in the U.S. Senate and the U.S. House of Representatives during the 118th Congress, or amendments through... I'm sorry. This title has been amended, so I want to read the amended title. To extend the claims period and prove compensation and benefits. And that's the title of the resolution. All right. So this resolution will be, if it is passed after this public hearing, if it gets put onto the session floor and is passed, it will then be transmitted to Congress, the Senate and the House. We will now receive testimony on this. All right. We're going to begin with Mr. Robert Celestio. I'm going to read from the list here. Robert Celestio, Frank Camacho, Bertha Duñez, if you would like to take a seat, if you intend to testify verbally. If not, it's okay. They're signed up in support. Carrie Iglesias also signed up in support. Vicky Mesa, Albert Perez, Gloria Perez also signed up. Angela Santos, if you would like to present testimony or written testimony. Manica Flores, you're welcome to present oral testimony. Lourdes Bendiola signed up in support. Clifford Woodton, W. Mears, Marissa Mears, Jeanette Sinicalis, Dolores Tidingfong, Antonia Tidingfong, Linda Perez, all signed up in support. Anna Mae Crisostoma in support. Dolores Babauta, Cartless Leguatnia, and Ronald Leguatnia, all in support. I've received also written testimony from Callan Perez. All right. So anyone else who would like to present oral testimony, you're welcome to have a seat. All right. Mr. Celestio, welcome. And you've been here many, many times for similar resolutions, so I want to thank you for that, and we look forward to your testimony today.
Thank you very much. Speaker Terlahi, Senator Chris Barnett. My name is Robert Celestio. I'm the current president for the Pacific Association for Radiation Survivors. On the resolution, if you notice, it says in Congress or amendment for the final FY2024 NDAA. Make a correction and just delete that. And so I'd like to be in my testimony. Honorable Teresa M. Ternai, Speaker, 37 Guam Legislature. Buenas en hafadeh, Speaker Terlahi. My name is Robert N. Celestio, Sergeant, United States Army Retired Disabled American Veteran, Indian Uta cleanup veteran. The people of Guam were exposed to nuclear fallout from the Pacific Nuclear Testing and Marshall Islands from 1946 to 1962. When 66 nuclear and hydrogen bombs were detonated, it was without their knowledge and consent that throughout these years, they were exposed to ionizing radiation such as iodine-131, strontium-90, and CCO-137. On July 10, 2000, Congress passed the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act amendments, Public Law 106245. And in September 2002, in response to congressional mandate, Public Law 107206. The Health Resources Services Administration, HRSI, asked the National Research Council Board on Radiation Effects Research Committee. Under congressional mandate, the HRSI charged the committee to consider the issues and make recommendations regarding three mandates, which one of them being Item C, whether other groups of people or additional geographical areas should be covered under the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act program in 2005 National Research Council. In 2004, I was invited by Dr. Isaf Alnabusi, Senior Director of the Board on Radiation Effects Research Committee, to present oral and written testimony there in Washington, D.C. at the National Academies of Science. I presented evidence and oral testimony before Dr. Preston, Dr. Dupe, and other scientists on the BRIR Committee, which is the Board of Radiation Research Committee. I also included sworn testimonies from Navy Lieutenant Birch Schreiber, who was the Chemical-Biological-Radiological Officer on Guam in 1952. He testified that, quote, "The Geiger counters were off the scale in November 1952." On October 31, 1952, the first thermonuclear device with the code name Mike was detonated. It had a total yield of 10.4 megatons. On November 3, 1952, radiation was detected on Guam. In 2005, the National Research Council's final report was published, quote, "Assessment of the Scientific Information for the Radiation Exposure Screening and Educational Program", unquote. On page 200, the committee initiated an independent assessment of the radiologic consequences related to the weapons tests in the Pacific to people living on Guam. This was their conclusion, quote, "Conclusion, as a result of its analysis, the committee concludes that Guam did receive measurable fallout from the atmospheric testing of nuclear weapons in the Pacific. Residents of Guam during the period should be eligible for compensation under RICA in a way similar to that a person is considered to be downwinders," unquote. Honorable Speaker and Senators, I'm here today asking for your support of Resolution 171-37 LS, which by extension supports the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act of 2017, so that not only the people of Guam be included in RICA, but everyone that has been affected by their exposure to radiation and uranium mining. We are greatly thankful and may God bless. Robert Celestio, President of PARs. If it's okay, I'd like to... But first, we have two groups. We have the frontline community group that we've been working for many, many years, over a decade. And then we have the RICA Working Group, and we've been lobbying in Congress. We even went to the Capitol last year in September, and we did a press conference with Senator Hawley and Senator Crepo and Luhon. But this is a letter that was asked by all these organizations. These are the organizations. It's called the Tribal Nation, Navajo Nation, Blue Water Valley Downstream Alliance, Carrollton Friends, Coldwater Creek, the Just Facts, Concerned Citizens for Nuclear Safety, Downwinders of Mojave County, Arizona, Downwinders Incorporated, Eastern Navajo Dying Against Uranium Mining, First We Bomb New Mexico, a nonprofit film documentary, Idaho Downwinders, Interfaith Worker Justice, New Mexico Just Bombs STL, Missouri Coalition for the Environment, Multicultural Alliance for a Safe Environment, Navajo Nation, Washington Office, Navajo Uranium Radiation Victims Committee, New Mexico Conference of Churches, New Mexico and Oaxaca Interfaith Power and Light, New Mexico Environmental Law Center, New Mexico Social Justice and Equity Institute, Ohio Nuclear Free Network, and Pacific Association for Radiation Survivors Guam, Peace Works, Kansas City, Physicians for Social Responsibility, Kansas City, Post-71 Uranium Workers Committee, RICA Frontline Community Coalition, Soil Mill Dine Waters, Southwest Research and Information Center, Southwest Uranium Miners Coalition, Post-71, STL Toxic Ware, Tularusa Basin Downwinders Consortium, Veterans for Peace, Santa Fe, New Mexico Chapter, Washington Physicians for Social Responsibility. These are the organizations who have signed up for this letter to be sent to every senator in the U.S. Congress. And Guam, the Pacific Association of Radiation Survivors, we have always been included. We've met with so many of our counterparts, and this is the letter that will be sent to all the senators. It says, "Dear Senator, we write to urge you to take immediate action to reauthorize and update the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, RICA, before it expires this spring. We are victims of the U.S. government early nuclear program poisoned by the Manhattan Project and Cold War nuclear activities. There are tens of thousands of Americans like us across the nation. If RICA is allowed to lapse in a few months, many of those Americans would not be compensated for the suffering caused by their own government. Last year's blockbuster Oppenheimer highlighted our country's race to develop the nuclear bomb, but missing from this account was the collateral effect of nuclear radiation and hard-working Americans. Following the trail, the bomb reveals a wake of death and sickness. Millions of tons of uranium ore miners were told the risks, were not told the risks, or given even basic protective equipment. The uranium was refined and habazily stored in locations through the U.S. like St. Louis, Missouri, contaminating local land and waterways. 210 above-ground nuclear tests, including Nevada, New Mexico, spread radic to fallout across Manhattan West. All of this caused thousands of Americans to develop cancers and pulmonary diseases. It is a terrible truth that in the process of building our nuclear deterrent to keep Americans safe from our adversaries, the U.S. harmed and even killed its own citizens. In 1990, Congress recognized this harm and created RICA to provide compensation to Americans who were unknowingly exposed to radiation because of these government actions. Unfortunately, this program is set to expire on June 7, 2024, in a few months from now. The current structure of RICA also fails to provide justice to important groups, were omitted from the initial legislation. We know a great deal more today than in 1990 about how widespread radiation exposure was, but for decades, many of these exposed communities have been ignored and left to suffer. RICA is a targeted and need-based program to qualify monuments demonstrate that they live in a specific geographical area near exposure sites during the years of most risk and have developed one of the specific radiogenic diseases, including in RICA. It was created as a cost-saving measure to avoid costly and time-consuming litigations brought against the U.S. government. But because it has previously been so limited, its cost to the government has been kept artificially low. Instead, excluded communities have been shouldering these costs, covering devastating medical bills and sometimes paying the price with their lives. Senator Hawley, Luhon, and Crepo are leading bipartisan effort to fix this. Their legislation would reauthorize RICA and strengthen coverage to include downwinders, uranium miners, and residents were left out of this program to include us. We are the forgotten victims of World War II and the Cold War, who sacrificed their health for our national security. We ask that you please join in the effort to bring us justice as you vote to send hundreds of billions to victims of war overseas. We ask you spare a fraction of the amount of victims for victims of war in our homeland. Thank you for your consideration."
Sisus Massey, Mr. Celestio. Could you just tell us again? That letter was sent already?
No, it was dated today.
Oh, okay.
And so I am very thankful for us being in this name of coalitions and that we're not forgotten. And I want to thank each and one of you guys. And I'd like to say that Mr. Canata's name is not here. Would you like your name to be on the resolution? Senator Canata? That's not up to me. It's up to... But I would love to see your name there. Amen. And I want to thank each and every one of our members being here today, and a lot of them couldn't make it. And we're hoping and praying that our resolution that you're going to send to Congress will make a big difference if you could send it to each congressman and women and senators because March, April, May, June, four months, this program ends. It was extended for two years. Senator Hawley is really pushing hard for our bill. He's going to try and introduce it in March 8 in the appropriation bill. So that's what we're hoping and praying. So I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. We'll let Manica Flores testify, and then we'll get back to you with questions from the panel. I'd also like to ask the audio, when you get a chance, to please pan closely, members of PARs who are here or those who are here in support of the bill, because these guys, we just want to make a record. And I appreciate all the signs that you've brought with you today, Sisus Massey. All right, Ms. Flores.
Hafadeh, Senators, thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony. My name is Manica Flores. I'm here as an individual, but also on behalf of P'Teheh LaTexan Saver Tidian, here to offer, extend our official support for Resolution 171. You know, and then also personally, the first time I heard Seniut Celestio speak out about nuclear fallout in our part of the Pacific, I was still a teenager. And it's been over 25, 26 years since I've heard Mr. Celestio first, you know, as a young person, really first speak to our public. I know it's been longer than that. 22 years? About 22 years? Okay, 22 years, yeah. So I was a young, I was a young person. It's been over 20 years, basically. And I watched Mr. Celestio really deal with a lot of backlash in our community. I mean, Mr. Celestio is an example of somebody we all really should strive to be more like. His commitment, his endurance, his unwavering work to bring this serious issue of injustice to light. And we have to remember that people in our community rejected Mr. Celestio at one time. They tried to dismiss his claims. They tried to minimize his work and tried to categorize him as somebody, you know, who we can't take very seriously. He proved everybody wrong. He proved everybody wrong. Unfortunately, what Mr. Celestio experienced, well, first of all, we need to thank, we need to thank Mr. Celestio. The reason why we're all here today and the reason why we're still fighting for RICA is because of Mr. Celestio. So, Sana Massey, Seniut. And the reason why it was... Thank you. Thank you so much. It's actually really hard to not get emotional about it because it was, when you think about the challenges Mr. Celestio had for over 20 years and our community, it has to do with also the erasure of colonial history, the erasure of military violence and injustice in the Pacific. And what Mr.'s, who Mr. Celestio represents is the complexity, the special nuances of our people, that you can be a veteran and still challenge military injustice. You could be a radiation survivor, you know, who your community, with, who your community is questioning and still be brave enough to continue to challenge the status quo. You know, the erasure of our Pacific history, the amnesia of what America did in the Pacific is intentional. It's a part of a long legacy of environmental racism, and it's definitely linked to our colonization. In December, a member of the climate change team from the Office of the High Commissioner of Human Rights from the United Nations asked for a meeting with me and Mr. Celestio. And he couldn't believe that Guam had gotten much closer to getting compensation than the Marshall Islands. He said, "How can even the place where this happened be so much farther away from getting compensation and recognition than a place like Guam?" And it's because we have a Mr. Celestio. It's really because we have a Mr. Celestio." And that's the answer I gave to that member of the U.N. High Commissioner on Human Rights Office. It's going to take a miracle, really, for them to amend RICA in the next few months. Still, we cannot give up hope. We have to come here and we thank you, Speaker Terlahi, and all the senators for introducing this resolution and for demanding this call to action in Congress on behalf of our island. But also, I encourage the legislature to please consider next steps should this not be successful, you know, potential litigation or other legal frameworks that we could take to challenge the United States' failure to make right a horrible injustice that happened here and throughout the Pacific. And we have to really think about how this also impacts other parts of the Pacific. If we are miraculously added to RICA in the next few months, it might bring more just, it might bring justice closer to the Marshall, for the Marshall Islands. We really have to contextualize it in that way, that the things that happen in Palau, because of U.S. militarization, they impact us here. The things that happen here impact the rest of the Pacific, the things that happen in the Marshall, everything, that we're all, that they're all interconnected. There were all, all these things are interconnected. Our radiation survivors are sick and dying. And even looking at the years, you know, of folks that qualify for this radiation exposure, this isn't only my parents, this is many relatives that qualify, many relatives in our family. And so we need this, this compensation. Our radiation survivors need and their relatives need health care, and that's it. That's all. So thank you so much, Sana Massey, for this resolution. And we're just so happy and honored to support RICA and our community of radiation survivors and Seniut Celestio. Sana Massey, Seniut. Thank you all so much.
Sana Massey, Ms. Flores. We also have signed up Linda Perez and Angela Santos. Ms. Perez.
Hafadeh, Senator Terlahi, Senator Barnett, and Senator Roy Canata. We thank you all for being here to support our organization, PARs, as well as the community and those stricken with cancer, those who are war survivors that are not only dealing with cancer but other issues, other health issues. I wasn't going to come today, but Robert asked if we could come to support him. I wasn't feeling well, actually, earlier. But I felt compelled to come because if there's something I can say that can make a difference than, than... I'd be happy to share what I know and what I've experienced and why it's important for the legislators to support our claim and to support our mission as well as the resolution that we're going to be presented with. First, I just want to say that we are the pioneers of PARs, the Pacific Association of Radiation Survivors, Robert Celestio being the founder. And then we have Dolores and Tony Tidingfong and myself. We had over 50-plus members then in 2003, and we are the remaining of that 50-plus. And then we have the rest of the group here that came and joined us years thereafter to support the Pacific Association of Radio Survivors. And we are so very grateful that they are still with us. It's been a long journey. It's been a long fight, and they continue to be with us. And so we're one big group here, and so here we are. The reason why I felt it was important for me to come before you is because, number one, I wanted to tie in what Manessa?
Manica.
Manica. And Robert stated earlier, we have been going through so much. Health-wise, there are a lot of people that are stricken with cancer, and it's not just these families, but my family as well. I've also was diagnosed with cancer times two. This is my second battle of cancer, and I'm grateful to God that he has composed me and still continues to give me the lives that, that he wants to continue to bless me with. But I'm here to speak in support of those that can't speak. Lieutenant Birch Schreiber, back when he first came to Guam, I went around, I took him around the island, and he actually is a real person, and he's not just something that Robert has mentioned in the, in the documents here. But he, he was such a wonderful person who really loved the people of Guam. And he was burdened with the knowledge of knowing that Guam was, had high incidence of radiation exposure. He was the one that used the Geiger counter, and he was told to, to be quiet when he went into his commander, to share his, you know, his findings. He was told to be quiet and to just go back to his duty. But it was a burden that he held, and the guilt was just killing him, that one day he and Robert were able to meet. He gave his sworn testimony. He came to Guam, and we took him around. He took me to the sites where he worked, where the radiation exposure was high when his Geiger counter was used. And so that's, that's a real story. And, you know, it was a privilege for me to go around with him. And so I'm grateful that we had that opportunity to speak with somebody who really, you know, wanted to help the people of Guam. And he also made a big impact in our organization because it gave us reasons to continue to fight. Now, healthcare, when I was, in 2022, I had to stay in, in Now, healthcare, when I was, in two thousand and twenty-two, I had to stay in, in the mainland because of my situation. The, the, the insurance company told me that there was not a specialist for my situation. So I had to stay in the mainland. And my situation is not unique because there are many people in Guam that have to go off-island for medical care because the specialist is not here available for them. And so another reason why we're fighting for justice is because, in DCs, because, you know, not only are we looking for monetary compensation, we're looking for healthcare provisions. Because a lot of people are not, number one, able to afford to go off-island, or even here. Two, they're not able to get the care that they truly deserve because there's limitations. And, and that's the truth. You know, we have a lot of wonderful doctors. We have a lot of specialists. But in some situations, some specialists are not, you know, able to treat other types of cancers. So people have to go off-island. So in terms of healthcare, that's another reason why we're rooting for, or fighting for, the people who can't, who can't afford medical care here. And also, the other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, I was with Robert last year. We went to DC. I met with the frontline community group, as well as the other communities out there from different states that are also fighting for justice because their, their states have been, have been affected by exposure. And, you know, my heart, when you actually listen to these people, you think that Guam is the only, I mean, you know, we have this mindset because we're just here in Guam. But when you actually go, go out there, you can actually hear their testimonies. You can hear their burdens. You can hear their pain. They can hear, you know, their cry for help. And so it was such a privilege for me to experience, you know, what it is to not only meet the community, but also to meet the congressmen and women out there that can make a difference. And Robert and I were there last year. And again, there's plans to go again this March. And with God's, you know, God's guidance and help, that I'll be able to go and represent, you know, our people because Mr. Celestial might not be able to go. So someone's gotta go. And so I might, I might go if, if, you know, if everything goes well. But I thank you all for listening to what we have to say. It is real. What we're saying is real. And, you know, the, it's, Robert has been trying. He has been working hard with God's, you know, God's strength because of all these challenges. And we are not gonna, you know, we're gonna be here for Robert. We're gonna continue to support him and continue to move, move, move everyone forward together as a group. So thank you again for being here for us.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Ms. Santos.
That is an Hafide, Senator Gouz, Angela Santos. I'm, I'm here on a personal level for Uncle Bob. I support the resolution, and it's, it's just, it's a day too long for it to be considered, already considering what he's been, what day the organization, PARZ, has been through. I moved back home in two thousand and three. My brother got sick, and I was introduced to Uncle Bob through my brother Angel. He was a big source of help for him and light, right? And I'm sure he is. I've seen that throughout the years until this day, and what type of person he is for everybody in this room. But I'll speak upon myself. So I moved back in two thousand and three, and upon that, my brother was ill. He was bedridden. Uncle Bob was just that light for our family. And he offered me the availability to be a reference as my, my job coming back home in Guumat Mommy. So he's, he introduced me to Guumat Mommy, and that should tell a lot about him. He was on the board. And that's an organization that assists with the disabled, our disabled family on island. So anyway, so he reached out to me and he was like, hey, you're doing that already with your brother? Your caretaking, man. There's a opportunity I have for you to jump on in this organization. It's a good organization. It's a nonprofit organization. And this stems into what type of person he is, person, really, but just his work, right? So he sat on this board for Guumat Mommy. And then later on, I ran in two thousand and six, after my brother passed away. I, I'm sorry, please forgive me. I got home in two thousand and two, and then I met Bob, Uncle Bob in two thousand and three. And in two thousand and six, I ran for senator. It was my first time. I was twenty-five. But I, just following along, and whoever my brother was, and the impact that he had on our people in our island, especially me, I'm the youngest, he's the oldest, he was like a dad to me. And then meeting Uncle Bob, I couldn't have, I wouldn't have thought that there would be a greater spirit than my brother. And then I met Uncle Bob. And the resilience and his love for our island and our people to receive the justice and injustice type, for, for an injustice type way in this radiation downwind, he was a part of that. So he had firsthand been involved with the cleaning up. So if there's anybody that can speak towards it, it's Uncle Bob. So I ran in two thousand and six, and I went to visit him in his home. And I'm like, oh, man, what is this guy gonna show me? He's got some important stuff. I walk into his home, and he's got binders and binders. And his home was just so, it was filled. I felt the love from him, but I also felt sadness, huh? Because he's like, man, he's just felt, he felt alone. And throughout the years, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk into where the resolution is right now, it's a day too late, right? It should have been three, ten years ago. It feels like a millennia that he's been fighting. No? That's how long that this injustice has been lingering, really. And that's, that in itself is an injustice. So, man, Uncle Bob, I appreciate your resilience, and you've brought PARZ this far. I wasn't gonna speak. I was gonna just give like a solid written testimony, but I couldn't not speak. I wanted to share this because from your voice comes a lot. And you shared that with me, and I would like to give that respect back to you. I owe you a lot, Uncle Bob. We all do, you know? And you've, you've come across some health issues this past few months, man. And I'm, we're blessed to still have you here. And we're gonna stand next to you, sir. So in conclusion, I'd like to just say that I support this resolution fully. And be with PARZ. And God bless everybody that has passed along the way. And hopefully that we have that very strong voice from our Senate Legislature to make an impact in the US Congress. Signamasi.
Signamasi. Mr. Torres.
Hi, Madam Chair, and members of the Senate, this legislature, members of PARZ and the rest of the audience. I'm Enrique Torres, just retiree, both military and Gulf Guam. Again, kudos to all the work that's done before us, joined PARZ. And I recognize PARZ's importance when I was a public health employee. We also wanted to find out what the scope of the cancer on Guam. If ever there was a study, you will see that there's a correlation ship between what exposure was from radiation fallout and our citizens of Guam. And, and I won't go into that because it's already been rehashed over and over and over again. But if you can reach out to public health employee, citizen, statisticians, to see where there can be, let's say, detailed data making this point. I'm here also to give you kind of like my generalization of where, where we're at, where we are now, and where we are going. And I will start with where we were. Of course, the defense of the country, the United States, as well as our, our own island, was to what extent was World War II going to end? And the way scientists developed the weapon, the nuclear weapon, it was a time that it saved lives and it also gave us future. That was where we were. And the testing had to be part of that solution. And in fact, I would give you a visual, not just the United States, but throughout the whole world. Picture the world. Picture a popcorn effect throughout the whole world where little bursts of explosions were happening worldwide during different times of the, the years, all the way up to around nineteen forty, maybe late sixties, Mr. Celestial? Sixty-two. So from forty-four was when we needed the, the nuclear weapon to sixty-two. Now, I bring that up because how can we say then that radiation would not affect me in my backyard? And I'll, I'll, I'll give you another visual, okay? So we're now past World War II. And now we are in this age of threats, right, be, right next to us, to the east of the United States, I mean, to the, yeah, east of the United States and in Europe. You know, I'm going with this. There's a lot of speculation. There's gonna be another world war. Now, I bring that up because the United States is felt that they are not ready. So they're building up new facilities to increase the arms that we now, the arsenals that we may or may not have to defend the nation. If there was a, if there was, and I'm, I'm bringing, bringing this next point up because it also brings this issue of radiation back into all citizens of the United States and the rest of the world. If there were releases of these weapons, however they are delivered, by ICBMs or by aircrafts, the, the picture is this. Imagine it, an explosion happened in central, the central parts of the United States, Midwest. And a wind cloud throughout the atmosphere is available, available to, to disperse this new radioactive material. No one is safe in the United States. So they're making newer, they're called PIT facilities to get our, ramp up our arsenals, to be able to, as they say, as a deterrent. Hopefully, we'll never have to use these weapons ever again. And so the, it's not just our backyard. We were the backyard for the test that happened to the east of us. And it's scientifically proven that the radioactive fallout, invisible as it is, to even military members here at the time, the story that we got was when the tests, tests were happening in those area, Marshall Island, Bikini Atoll, military was told, stay in your homes. What was, what warnings were given to the local civilians? No, we just went out and did our, we were farming. We were also continuing with our daily lives, not knowing that maybe the vegetables that we were harvesting, the fish that we were consuming, and any other types of relationship there is to this nuclear fallout. So I hope I can paint the, the, the picture that it's here. It was, I know, it was brought before us, and now we are dealing with the consequences of sickness, illnesses. And if you don't, if you know the shelf life of radioactivity, it's maybe, I'm gonna say, millions of years. And there are sites in the United States that are still being deemed uninhabitable because of the, these, these particles that are in our ground. Yeah, we had radon. I'm sorry, we also have radon, but we also had the chemical agent, agent orange. We've had that, and it's already been proven. So, but that shelf life of those elements is way, way shorter than what we now know about radioactive elements, not brought to us by nature. Radon is natural. But radioactive fallout isn't. It's man-made, and it was not determined to be this, this long-lasting. So I, I conclude with my testimony with, you know, there are members of my family that if you try to say, well, he has it, but he doesn't have it, or she does it, but he doesn't have it, when you start to say, well, wait a minute, it's in the same family that this cancer progression jumps from generation to generation. It's sad to say that it has not been determined that it will not go to possibly people who may suffer consequences of cancer after nineteen sixty-two. That was, it was, that was the threshold, right, Robert? That Clements could,
We had a lot of negotiations. Would you like me to answer his question?
I was gonna say, yes. Are you done testifying, Mr. Torres? Okay, thank you. Yes, if you would yield to that, Mr. Celestial.
Yes. When we were introducing the bills, I was asked for Guam, the years to be given. And they gave us nineteen forty-six. They took away fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty. And then they gave us, they gave us back sixty-two, the first sets of bills. And the reason why was because they were giving us detonation, detonation dates. And so this last go-around last year, when we introduced the new bill, I explained to them that can you run it concurrent and give us fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty? Because the people there also were affected during that timeframe, even though there was no detonations during that time period. And they did. So in our bill, nineteen forty-six to sixty-two was given to us. And even though I explained to them that you're only giving us detonation dates, not exposure dates, because the exposure date goes all the way up to nineteen ninety-two, scientifically, because strontium and cesium has a half-life of thirty years. So even though they stopped the detonation in sixty-two, the radiation was still here. So they had a half-life of thirty years. So I asked them then, and they said, no, we're gonna give you sixty-two because that's why we're giving those folks in, in New Mexico and the other states. So I hope that answers your question. Yeah, sure.
Thank you very much. Did I get everyone who wanted to testify? Is there anyone else who's here who would like to testify? Right? If not, then we're gonna open it up to questions from the panel. I would like to begin thanking all of you, of course, for your testimony. I know sometimes if we come year after year, we, we might get discouraged. But I want to really praise your leadership in Mr. Celestial and, and your hearts of all of you who are members of PARZ and who are not, who are in support of this. It is an injustice to Guam. And so we will, of course, want to remedy that. But it's so much more. And so I'd like to ask Mr. Celestial, if you wouldn't mind. And so I'd like to ask Mr. Celestrio, if you wouldn't mind. I know that we've lost many PARs members, so that's, to me, the perfect example of why we are doing this, because PARs members, a lot of them joined this organization because they have suffered from cancer or their family has suffered from cancer, so they see it firsthand, they've gone through it firsthand, and it's for them that some of these signs say we need health care for our radiation survivors now, we need health care. And I guess, Mr. Celestrio, if you could just explain that part, you know, for everyone who's listening, how does supporting RICA, which is a bill in Congress, going to get us health care?
Thank you for the question. The Radiation Exposure Compensation Program, which enacted in nineteen ninety and amended a few times, has given different categories, like onsite participants, downwinders, uranium miners, and ore transporters. And so downwinders were never given health benefits. The EEOIC, the Energy Employees Individual Occupational Compensation Program, was given health benefits and, I believe, the highest seventy-five thousand dollars compensation even today. And so we felt as frontline community group, saying that's not fair, because them being only energy employees weren't, were actually workers in the energy organizations and were aware of what they were doing with the nuclear program. But we, as civilians, we weren't told, we were just recruited, you know, and exposed to the nuclear fallout. So we decided that we deserve the same health benefits as the energy employees. And so the health benefits would come through the Radiation Exposure Compensation Program, pre-screening would come to Guam and other states. And the way it works is that they would work with other clinics to be authorized to, if an individual is eligible after applications through the Department of Justice and is given the green light, that yes, you're eligible, the individual would be able to go to the clinic and get free medical care.
Pre-screening for cancer?
Yes.
All right, and that's because...
Not only free screening, but free medical benefits.
Free medical benefits?
Yes.
Free medical benefits?
Yes, free medical benefits.
Yes, okay. And we're talking about cancer because that is what is recognized right now under the congressional law, United States law, that exposure to radiation as a downwinder has potential effects such as leukemia, multiple myeloma, lymphoma, primary cancers of the thyroid, male or female breasts, estophagus, stomach, pharynx, small intestine, pancreas, bile ducts, gallbladder, salivary gland, urinary bladder, brain, colon, ovary, liver, and lung cancers. In addition to health care benefits, pre-screening and free health benefits, if Guam is recognized under RICA, what other benefits are those who are eligible going to receive?
There's one more. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the bill to be given to the eligible individual.
All right. And so you, over the years, have been advocating that an eligible individual for Guam would be those who were on Guam from nineteen forty-six to nineteen sixty-two. At least for one year during that period, and who had been diagnosed with cancer. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right. And you told us why you picked the time period, those were the times of the testing and in between, but you said, really, we should have gone up to the nineteen nineties because of the thirty-year half-life.
Right, the exposure date is totally different than detonation dates.
All right. So we have been exposed even way beyond what we are asking for.
Yes. Matter of fact, if you look at the history with the uranium miners, they're called post-seventy-one is because in this amendment, the uranium miners were only given up to nineteen seventy-one for compensation. So now they're asking, in our amendment, to bring them up to nineteen ninety-two.
All right. And I noted that the cancers that I just read out that are eligible, those are on Guam. I'm looking at the Cancer Registry between two thousand and seven and twenty eighteen shows that seven of the top ten adult cancers in Guam are compensable under RICA, they qualify.
Yes, yes.
And I know, I don't have to tell any of you here, that cancer has affected almost all of our families, and we know people who are eligible for this for sure, who have been here during this time period. Mr. Celestrio, the story about, you know, Lieutenant Schreiber and the, that, you know, actual evidence of exposure or the exposure of people of Guam to the radiation based on a Geiger counter, that's a, I love that story. Thank you for getting that evidence, testimony from him. I really think it's a testament to your relationships that you've been able to build, and you, Ms. Perez, in order to secure these. You've even got us as far as the, what's it called? You got a congressional authorization for the, for the radiation exposure screening and education program report in two thousand and five that made findings regarding Guam. This was by the National Research Council on behalf of the Committee to Assess the Scientific Information for the Radiation Exposure Screening and Education Program and Board on Radiation Effects, Research Division on Earth and Life Studies. This was all congressionally mandated because of your advocacy?
That was a miracle.
A miracle?
They were, they were out there in Utah during their, you know, trying to find out what other geographical areas. So I picked up the phone and I looked for Dr. Ysef Nabusi, she was the senior director for the program, the BRIR committee, and I asked her to come to Guam, and she said she didn't have any money. Can we come to Washington, D.C. and testify and give our evidence? And we did. And by the grace of God, they came out with that conclusion.
Yeah. And so you read the conclusion earlier, I just want to make sure everybody heard it, that Guam did receive radioactive debris from fallout during the nuclear weapons testing in the Pacific Ocean. Further, they noted that, as a result of its analysis, the committee concludes that Guam did receive measurable fallout from atmospheric testing of nuclear weapons in the Pacific, residents of Guam during that period should be eligible for compensation under RICA in a way similar to that of persons considered to be downwinders that they had already recognized in the States.
Yes.
All right. So I want to really thank you for that. That really sets Guam apart. I mean, as you said, it's a miracle that we would be set apart, but very grateful.
Madam Speaker.
The, you told us, can you just tell us, or everybody who's listening, why, when did you find out? You were the first advocate for this, and when did you find out?
Nineteen ninety-eight. I was looking for information for me, being at Inuit Clean Up, because I got introduced to the National Association of Atomic Veterans, became a member, made friends with a Mr. Clark, he was from Hawaii, and others, and then I got introduced to the main group. So I started going online, and then I found out that President Clinton had an advisory committee established in nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-four called the Human Radiation Experiments Advisory Committee with Dr. Rufaiden. And so I found out that there was a website, but prior to the website, it said that he declassified all the agencies, government agencies from the CIA and DOE, Department of Energy used to be the Atomic Energy Commission. And so I said, wow, they declassified all that. Then I found out the website from Department of Energy had HREX, so when I went in there, I was amazed that there was millions and millions of documents that were declassified, and it was, it took two years, because if you punch one screen, they had these blocks with colors, purple, yellow, whatever, and when you hit one, thousands of records will come out, just one out of the fifty in there. And so I had to read thousands and thousands of records, and I found stuff for Inuit Clean Up veterans. But to my surprise, I found out Guam was in there, in the declassified documents. Then I started finding out what the heck's happened there, and communications with those people from Inuit to our commander, I didn't know that the commander at that time was in charge of all the detonations. And so I was reading communication, did you guys receive fallout? I said, what? Received fallout? And I started digging even further than, I found Lieutenant Birch Schreiber through another friend, and then I called him up, and he says, I can't talk to you, I'm under a Q clearance, a top-secret clearance. And I said, no, it's been declassified in nineteen ninety-four. And he says, okay. So he went and called Department of Defense and found out that, yes, his security clearance has been lifted, he could talk. So I wrote, he called me back up and said, what do you need? And he said, I need a sworn testimony notarized from you on what happened here on my island. And he did. And when he sent it to us, I was like blown away, I said, wow, you know, here he is saying that, yeah, in nineteen fifty-two, I was the radiological biological officer on Guam, and my Geiger counters were going off the scale, I went to my commander to say, to report it, he says, go back to your station and be quiet. And so he couldn't say anything for all those years. And he felt bad, because in his testimony, he says that he would see the local people drinking out of water cisterns, you know, gakous milk and stuff like that, so.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure you repeat that story, because the first time I heard that story myself, I was just shocked, because it's one thing, the injustice of being exposed, but it's a whole other thing to be exposed, not be told while everybody knew, or those in charge knew, and then to be exposed, not be told while they knew, and then they are refusing for all these years to include you after they've got documentation and everything else that proves the point. And I want to also just thank you, because none of us, as far as I know, has gone digging through declassified documents and done any work like that. And I think you are just a treasure for Guam, really, like a national hero for having done all of that and led us down the path to where we are today.
Could I share one more story?
Pardon?
Could I share one more story?
Sure, please.
After I gave testimony at the National Academies of Science, Neil Weir, who used to work for Congresswoman Burdahlou, came to me and Mr. Brady, Mr. Brady, PARs hired him from Nevada, he was a health physicist. So the Secretary of Department of Energy was requesting our presence for the next day to meet him at the Forest Hill Building. They took us all the way up to the top building and put us in this room, and they had two guys in black suits at the door. And I asked Mr. Brady, what's going on? And he says, they're preparing the shovels for us in the back. And I said, stop joking like that, man, what's going on? So two guys came in, one was the Secretary of Department of Energy, and he says, Mr. Brady, we know who you are, but Mr. Celestrio, where'd you get your information? And I said, oh, boy, I'm going to jail. Yeah. So I told him, I said, from your website, HREX. And he said, what's that? And I said, no, it's the Department of Energy. And so he went out, he came back, they said, release us. And we didn't think about it, we just got on the plane, and he went to Nevada. But I got a call from Hawaii, the mayor of Hawaii asked Charlie Clark, my friend, if I could stop in and help them download information from their website. So I came in, they took me to the mayor's office, and I shared with the chief of staff how to download information. Came home, three days later, she goes, where's the website? I said, what? I went in my office and I put on the screen and says, this website has been pulled due to national security.
The website was pulled due to national security?
Due to national security after I just came from, being questioned.
It is really incredible. So not only did you look through and find things, but then they closed the site, and no one else is going to be able to find those things. So, but you led us down a path that really has been quite remarkable. We've got it in writing, we've got it in books, we've got sworn testimony, we've got congressional, you've gone to Congress several times and been heard because of this. And we really had a, looked like a good shot at it this year, we were very hopeful, when it was included in the Senate and DAA, but not in the joint conference, so.
That's because of personal attitudes with those senators and congressmen.
Yeah. So we've learned a lot of lessons through your advocacy as well, like justice is not necessarily what they're going to give us. A lot of it has to do with who's there, what time, right?
Yes.
Miracles as well, and also persistence. And if we get this, it is clearly because of your persistence and your ingenuity, really. So thank you very much.
I want to thank all the members of PARs.
All the members, I agree, all the members of PARs.
They gave me hope.
I've been very fortunate to see them over all these years, and they've, they've really, they've raised money, they've recognized those who have passed, they continue to advocate sending letters to Congress. So in all the past years, as I've been a senator, we've collected testimony and sent almost every year to Congress testimony from all of you, so s'il vous en pâche. And we did receive a letter from Carolyn Perez, reminding us that her dad, Dr. Chris Perez, testified during, to the Senate Judiciary Committee at that time, and regarding Guam's exposure to the downwind, as downwinders.
Madam Speaker, may I just say something before we close?
I'm going to give it to Mr. Senator Barnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Celestrio, Mrs. Perez, Mr. Torres, Ms. Flores, and Angela for your testimony. While I was sitting here listening to your testimony, somebody texted me and they said, Senator, you look mad up there, smile. And, you know, I don't really know where to start, but De Fonto Angit and Robert and even some of the people we had here in the, on the previous bills, inspired many, many people through your courage, through your defiance, your civil disobedience. And I just always go back to this, Robert, and I think I said this to you the last time you were in this hearing, when you took your first steps on this journey, when you started telling people about what you had discovered, there were many in our community who didn't believe you, there were many in our community who called you a radical. And it's the hard work, the passion, the dedication of individuals like yourself, and of course, De Fonto Angit, that, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think it's clear that I have a lot of company in this, that it's the work of you guys that inspired those of us who came after to ask those difficult questions, to not be so trusting and accepting of the facts we're given by, you know, the administering power as well as our own government. And I think it's interesting that, you know, despite all of the work that you have done over the years, despite the challenges you faced in the early days to the validation that we see you and your efforts and receipt of today, it saddens me that there are still many in our community who label those that ask the difficult questions, they label those people radicals. And when I look out at the people who are here today, I kind of thought to myself, and I had a laugh, I said, you know, they don't look like radicals. They don't look like radicals. And because of the work that you've done, Mr. Celestrio, we continue now to ask these questions, and I think it's important because, you know, my mom told me once, history has a funny way of repeating itself. And so knowing your history and knowing what has been done on our island, what has been done to our island, whether it's, you know, PCB contamination at CoCos or Agent Orange contamination, or, you know, radiation exposure, or the dumping of mustard gas, or any number of these offenses, not just to our environment, but to our people and our land as well, when you know this history, it tempers how you look at things, and it requires us and it obligates us, those of us who care, to ask the questions of the powers that be. And so I thank you for that, Mr. Celestrio, and of course, I think that you have inspired a whole generation of people who have come after you, you know, because of the work that you have done, as well as the PARs group. I mean, when I, when I look out, you know, at you guys, right, and I, and I know the work that you're doing, that you have, you know, outworked... that you have, you know, outworked all of our delegates combined. Every delegate that we have sent to Congress, I mean, and I mean no offense to them, but you have outworked every single delegate we have had for far less money as well. And you know, and it just breaks my heart because I've talked to you for, for a few years now. I've had you on the link and you have shared and been willing to share the progress, the challenges, the obstacles that this effort has faced every step of the way. And what saddens me is there have been many times where I've talked to you and you have expressed your hopefulness that we are just this close from getting this thing passed and we're just this close to achieving that justice for our people. And, and that we're just this close. And I know that I spoke to you in this term and we were just this close. When I watched you on the steps of our nation's capital, speaking to the, you know, the crowd of people that although oceans and thousands of miles separate us, there's a commonality, you know, that we were both poisoned by our leaders. I mean, there's no other way to put it, really. When I saw how close we were, I felt that hope that you have and you still have today, despite, you know, how many times we've gotten all the way to right before the finish line and we've seen this thing fall flat. You're still here. You're still doing the work. Everybody knows you have the challenges with your health, but you're still here. And you know, you don't look mad. You have a smile on your face. And so again, you continue to inspire me. And it's individuals like you, of course, and Lieutenant Schreiber and, you know, Sergeant Leroy Foster. I mean, it's sad when I think about these issues. So many of them run together, whether it's radiation exposure or Agent Orange. And as I was sitting here reading the resolution, in my mind, I thought it was Sergeant Leroy Foster who had the Geiger counter. But no, Sergeant Leroy Foster was the one who sprayed the Agent Orange and dumped it over the hillside following orders. Right? And so I think one of the other things that's inspiring is that we have seen these, these individuals like Sergeant Foster, like Lieutenant Schreiber, like yourself, who through defiance of orders have brought the truth out in the daylight, you know? And as we sit here and we discuss the cancers that plague our people and we think about so many of our loved ones who have died because of the plethora of cancers. And, you know, many of them, as the speaker has said, are listed right here in front of us. It just breaks my heart, 1946 to 1962. My Auntie Lawling and Auntie Genie, you know, we lost them both. We lost them both to cancer. And to think about how many more people we have lost and how many more we stand to lose, it is a real grave injustice. And I think the real lesson here is to keep moving forward and to keep asking those questions and to keep being radical. Because given our history and everything that we have been through, asking nicely has never really got us anywhere. So I commend you. And I wanted to, again, just read, I know we've talked about the story of Lieutenant Schreiber, but there is the piece of his quote in this resolution. So I just wanted to read it onto the record. In this, whereas in the sworn testimony of retired US Navy Lieutenant Charles Bert Schreiber on the fallout of the first hydrogen bomb test, the detonation of Operation Ivy's Mike, he states, "I was the radiological safety officer for the Headquarters Command Guam. On or about November 3rd, 1952, I was making my monthly checks sitting at the desk in that office that was about five feet from the window screens that covered the wall all the way down to about a couple of inches from the floor. I took out the metal calibration rod, about as big as a normal soda straw and about six inches long, stored in the instrument that has a small radioactive source on its end. I put the counter on the low setting. It has three, low, medium and high, and was ready to place the rod near the detection windows, two of them. But the dial needle was way over on the scale and the audible signal was clicking like mad or almost a continuous sound, sounds like constant static on a radio. My original thought was that the counter was malfunctioning. But when I raised it up and put it nearer to the screen window, the dial needle swung even further over and the sound increased still further. I then put it close to the screen, near the floor, and the needle went off the scale as far as it could swing right. I knew then it was not the counter, but that there was some radioactivity outside." And so I don't know if there's anything else to say on this subject, but I guess I do want to ask Mr. Celestial, and you know, previous testimony, you talked about, what do we do next? So in the, in the event we're not able to, and I believe in miracles, but I also believe, and I think this is a great lesson, pray hard, work harder. And you have definitely worked hard, Mr. Celestial. So what is, what is next for us if we don't get a miracle?
The frontline community with the senators and Congresswoman Fernandez has decided that they're going to try and put in for another five-year extension. If that doesn't work, then, and if the, if it comes to fruition that it sunsets in June, then our only recourse is to go to court and have a class action lawsuit because all the evidence is in our favor.
I think I've also said in this room and I've reminisced about the one Guam approach and I'm just going to say it again here on the record. We're going to, you know, we're going to send this resolution to the Congress. I hope that. And I pray that you have the full and unwavering support of our delegate.
We do.
Okay. And our governor, lieutenant governor as well. I always say, if we're speaking with one voice and we're all saying the same thing, it's that much easier, although it's never easy for them to hear what we're saying. And so again, I, we're going to send this to the Congress. They're going to know exactly how we feel. But I hope that we can have other voices from our leadership join us in, you know, making sure that we're heard on this issue in our nation's capital.
Just to let you know, Senator, we, I got invited to go in March to lobby with the other groups, with Senator Hawley to introduce an appropriation. Linda is going to try and take my place. So she'll be there to represent Guam.
Judging from her testimony, very capable representation. So thank you again, Ms. Perez. And Sisus Masie, Uncle Robert. And thank you very much to the panel. It's, it's really great to see people come out and just remind everybody of the history that we've been through. And this is a history that has not only affected, you know, people who are activists, but it affected so many of our people. And it just saddens me that, you know, in many ways, we are among the most patriotic people in the world, right? And we enlist and serve this country's defense at a rate that is, you know, much higher than in comparison to many other places. And I think that we need to see that reciprocated, definitely in this instance. So Sisus Masie, Mr. Robert, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Sisus Masie, Senator Barnett. Thank you again. And thank you again to all of you who are here. Yes. So I know that when we talk about cancer, we, you know, we remember those who have passed. I think every family has been affected by it here on Guam. I know like my dad's family, I think they have 11 kids and maybe nine out of the 11 had a different type of cancer. So when I was very young, I started to wonder what's going on on Guam, right? So when I met you, I was very glad to think that it is not necessarily just our diets. And, you know, when they tell us just different things, I just want them all to know as well that, yeah. If there's contamination that the people of Guam have to deal with, then just like anywhere else in the United States, that should be cleaned up and the people should be taken care of. So we're very, very grateful to you and your work and all of you and your advocacy over many years. This is so incredible. And I got to say silver lining. Silver lining is we got to meet all of you. Silver lining is we get to change our cancer sadness into work and advocacy and hopefully justice. And we get to make the record straight, right? As to what actually happened on Guam and what the people of Guam have gone through and sacrificed. And I know when you went to Congress last, and I know Senator Barnett tried to talk about it a little bit, that you are every day on, since Zoom, since we learned Zoom, he's been able to be on Zoom advocating together with this group that he talks about is actually a really huge thing. Not us, not even us senators get on regular conversations with other senators in Congress or those other advocacy groups. So it's really a huge thing for Guam to be represented in there regularly and to have that direct communication with the people who are sponsoring these bills, sponsoring the amendments, throwing it in at every opportunity that they get. And I think that they've been doing a great job as well. So thank you. So Mr. Celestial, would you like to close? Or Mr. Torres, you have something to say?
On behalf of my aunt, she's one of those, now she's a patient of cancer, but she's one of those that provided a testimony. And it was through your efforts, your efforts of your office in the legislature that made that, make that letter go that far, that close to getting RICA passed. And on behalf of my family, my aunt, we thank you. We wholeheartedly thank you. And please keep up the helping us as much as you can, Mr. Celestial. You want to carry on with?
As much as I can, we will. Mr. Celestial.
The time difference between Guam and the States and me waking up four o'clock, three o'clock in the morning to have a Zoom meeting is, I'm used to it already. And a lot of people don't know that happens Tuesdays and Thursdays every week. And you're right. It is a privilege to speak to legislative staff, senators, Congresswomen, you know, be in the same Zoom meeting with them and representing Guam. And, and there are times that Senator Hawley has to be reminded that, about Guam because they always, sometimes they want to leave us out. And then, then one of either Tina Cordova or Tonya Henderson would say, hey, you forgot Guam. And then I just chuckle, you know, and I said, okay, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. So just want to let the people know and our members that it's, it's a blessing to be able to communicate through Zoom every week. And sometimes I take it for granted that who I'm talking to. And I even got mad at them last week. And I didn't realize that, wow, I'm getting angry at these guys, you know? Who am I? So, you know, but, but it helped. Sometimes you do have to get angry, especially when they want to leave something out that's not right. And I had to disagree with one of their issues. And so it was a blessing that I did because they had to change it. And so that's what I want to share.
Sisus Masie again. And we will with haste transmit this. I mean, I'm sure all my colleagues will support it. I, this is the first time I'm going to promise because, but I've seen over the years, I've been very, very blessed that the senators on Guam have always been in full support. After they were doubting, then they became full support. But again, Sisus Masie to everyone. There's no additional testimony. It is now 5:50 PM and this hearing is adjourned. Sisus Masie.